All right, I'm gonna open this public hearing and it's to hear proposed changes to the land use ordinance. And I am going to hand it over to Dan DeBoer. And you can introduce yourself if you would please, Dan.
Hi, everyone. Dan DeBoer. I'm a regional planner with Midcoast Council of Governments. I've worked throughout the Midcoast helping with ordinance updates, comprehensive planning, economic development projects. Some grant applications in the past. But the town asked me to come in and help the planning commission with updating shoreland zoning within the land use ordinance. It is statewide mandatory shoreline zoning. It's governed by DEP's Chapter 1000. And so this update by and large was just to bring vinyl havens land use ordinance and the sections that relate to shoreline zoning into alignment with the relevant state statute. So that the town is still in full regulating control of shoreline zoning instead of the DEP saying, okay, we will take control because you don't have standards that meet our level of standards. So there are areas that the town's land use ordinance is more restrictive in the shoreline zone than the minimum state standards. Those haven't been changed. One of them is related to pier and dock management and allowable lengths of docks. So things haven't gotten less restrictive in the town's ordinances where they were more restrictive than state statute. But otherwise, it's by and large is updating definitions to match new state definitions. And then the sort of major changes that we add were repeal of local timber harvesting standards in the shoreline zoning. The state basically gives you three options when it comes to timber harvest management in the shoreline zone. You can either locally manage and have your local standards and it's your required, your, you know, staff orster or code enforcement officer, whatever you have on the staff would have to oversee that, which is a pretty heavy lift. That's what vinyl haven adding ordinance is already. The other two options that the state gives are either you can still locally administer and manage with your code enforcement, but you adopt the state standards word for word in timber harvesting in shoreline or option number three, which is the one the planning commission shows is you can repeal timber harvesting regulation in the shoreline locally, livestock and barrel, and hand it to the state's Bureau of Forestry and say, you all are in charge of managing timber harvesting in the shoreline zone now for our town. Every town that I've worked with on shoreline zoning chooses that option because it's a lot less work. And it's basically the same standards that you would have to meet either way. But any questions if anybody has, I'm happy to answer them. This is more or less an update to come in alignment with state statute. The last update to Chapter 1000 at the VP level was 2015. And nothing has really changed since.
I just wanted to introduce the members of the planning commission that are here. Chuck Gadsick and Ellen Ellisoffin and Marcia Cleveland are here. And I don't know if any of you wanted to make any comments.
Well, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. There are a lot of things I didn't personally like and I struggled with, but the fact is it's a state mandate. And, you know, to fight the state over some little silly. But, you know, I can mean it wasn't, it weren't any, any big hilarious.
Is that it? Anybody else have anything they want to say?
I'd like to ask Dan a question. How does the state enforce the forestry guidelines if we're not doing it? What's the process to that?
They, I mean, they, they still follow the DEP's and Bureau of Forestry state standards. They have their forestry staff. Are the ones that you would contact for harvesting in that shoreline zone. So timber harvesting as a general practice outside of the shoreline zone, the town still would manage. But once it goes into the shoreline zone, you contact DEP Bureau of Forestry and basically work out permitting with that.
So a private land owner would go to the planning board and the planning board would say you need to contact the DEP?
Bureau of Forestry.
Yes, but they would probably come to the planning board first, not knowing that they had to.
Or they would come to the town office.
Is it in our ordinance? Did we put it in our revised ordinance that you have for forestry in the shoreline zone? You contact the DEP because that would be useful for people.
Part of the language of the repeal notice, I guess, addresses that almost.
If word is pointing out that timber harvesting is not the same as clearing trees.
Yeah.
Clearing trees in front of your house is a whole different. Timber harvesting is really forced. And I'm not aware of any happening on that.
I'm not aware of any either.
Do you have a page you want me to go to, Dan?
It's towards the beginning.
Probably right there. Repeal municipal timber harvesting regulations.
What page is it?
Written first.
Yeah, so it's on H2 repeal.
Page two.
Has a note of, I guess it basically just notes who you would contact. And that you would contact is Bureau Department of Constellation Bureau of Forestry. For timber harvesting in the shoreline.
Thank you.
Well, we're here to give people the opportunity to ask questions about the.
Lanell?
Does the Bureau of Forestry actually have the capacity to handle timber harvesting clearing in the shoreline zone on vinyl haven? And any enforcement issues that might be required?
It's a good question. I don't know that they do. I think they have more capacity than the town does currently locally to enforce that. It's a pretty heavy lift for a code enforcement officer. But there are state department and the state departments are notoriously under staffed.
Once again, getting back to what Chuck said. We're not talking timber harvesting is different than cutting some blow downs or cutting a handful of trees on your property. Timber harvesting is like large scale. There's, there's none of it going on on the island anywhere and hasn't. Maybe when's the last time they cut light bedders? When was the last time they had a?
I think Tiny probably could have hardly.
But I mean, it hasn't been any of that in a while.
There's definitely cutting in the shoreline zone.
Yeah, so that's regular.
It's different, different, total different things.
And that, that is still, you know, general tree cutting and spot clearing and things like that. That is still governed by
By the town?
The town. That is still code enforcement officer jurisdiction. And should someone try to do timber harvesting in the shoreline zone, the Bureau of Forestry tends to pay attention really quickly because it looks pretty dramatic.
If there's anything that's worth making clear to save everybody answering a lot of questions over and over again, I think it's that distinction between timber harvesting and cutting on your own property, however you want to base it, just so people know. This is a big deal for most people.
Anything else?
I would like to know what's going on with up on Kaldowitz net next to my property at 439 Kaldowitz net. That's 431. For a campsite?
That's.
Business, commercial, advertising online?
I don't think that it's been investigated as yet.
And it doesn't have anything to do with this public hearing?
No, it doesn't. Yeah, it really doesn't have anything. This hearing is not about, about that, Carol.
I'm happy to answer your questions if you'd like to come in and talk about it.
Thank you. No other questions?
Think of them later. My email's on my open session post.
Do you have anything more you'd like to add to this?
I think it's all pretty logical, pretty straightforward. Don't think the, the state is particularly trying to be heavy handed here. I think they're actually trying to do a pretty good job of what can be a really difficult issue to manage.
Thanks, Dan.
So we just need to close the hearing.
I guess if everybody's happy with questions been answered and whatnot, so we can close the public hearing, make a motion. Do I have to make a motion, Marjorie, for that?
Oh, you do?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we close this public hearing.
Second.
On favor? Thank you.
We're doing our help in Dan and.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yeah.
Not the first time that we've just been helping with this. We could just eat a can of mess.
Be floundering. No, thanks for that, Chuck. I've heard from Marjorie commented on what a big help he's been. So that's good. We thank you, Dan.
Thanks a lot. My ego is just.
You're the VIP tonight. Thanks. Okay, so we will move on. And I'll call this Town of Vinyl Haven Board of Selectmen's meeting to order for Tuesday, August 26, 2025. Roll call. Tom Anthony is absent. Vlad Olson. Paint Warren, Leslie Dyer, myself, Elizabeth Bunker, and Marjorie Stratton. We don't have any additions to the agenda.
I didn't have any additions.
No, okay. Number two, approve agenda.
Are we gonna push that? Executive session again?
Well, Tom said that he thought he would be here.
He said he'd be here. He was late getting in from Hall, apparently.
Okay.
So apparently he's, he sent a message saying that he would be.
I'm sorry, I did have this request from the library to use some of their reserve funds for new computers.
Okay, so that would be on the new business?
Yeah.
And what, from the library, you said?
Yes. Library purchase of computer equipment.
Okay. So we will make a motion that we approve the agenda as amended. All favor? Yes, C, library purchase of computer equipment will be under new business. Nine C, cut that. Number three, minutes, approve the minutes from the August 12, 2025 meeting. All favor? Communications, 5A, Maine Municipal Association dividend payment.
So as longtime members of the Maine Municipal Association Risk Management Services, we are eligible to receive dividends on our workers' comp and in our our property insurance. So we received for workers' comp dividends, we got $1,103. And for our property insurance dividend, it was $2,280. So I just want to make you aware of that, of those.
Yeah.
Little bit of income.
Never refuse that. Okay, thank you. Number six, speakers from the floor? Anybody have anything to say?
Anymore? I mean, can it be discussed or just wait?
Sure, I'm happy to. I had a couple of inquiries. I was able to do some legwork on that. There is some, on campgrounds, there's a little bit of erudite in the land use ordinance. And there's some definitions, but if you look in the table of uses for campgrounds, campgrounds are not allowed in any zone other than RC, which is residential commercial. And then the planning board has to, an application would have to go to the planning board. I don't know if that answers your question.
Do you have any permits or even putting the road in? That's up there.
I think the, I'd have to check on that. There is a per. There is a permit for six 10 by 10 tent platforms.
I'm talking the road.
I'd have to check on that. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't have that information.
You have it?
DEP to, I have been doing it for three years.
Again, if you'd like to come in and talk to me about it, I can give you any information that I have on file.
Okay, any, any comments or questions, please direct to the chair? And then I will call on, okay, thank you. Anything else, Carol? I skipped over four like, like I always do. Go back and approve and sign treasures warrants, warrants, number nine. All favor? Okay. We all set to move on? Did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay. Number seven, committee and departmental reports and appointments, A downtown project, Gabe. Hello.
Good afternoon. Hello, good afternoon. Yeah, how is everyone? Hi. Just some quick updates. I think where we left off was we were waiting for approval from a couple of things from NBR, sorry, I'm working with NBRC, so that's on my mind. With approval from EDA to move forward with the fact that we just had the one bid. So we had to put in a request for them approving the sole source bid, which they have. So that's very good. So in, just in time, because the bid deadline was yesterday, I think it's today. And we got the confirmation yesterday. So basically now it's, it's in contractors' hands to just get all of their compliance documents together. And we'll, we'll be able to move forward with the official contracting. And that will be for, well, we have first stormwater, that's moving forward with the contracting process. And then we'll be moving on to water and roads and sidewalks. So I think everyone knows this, but they're sort of, they were put out to bid as like distinct, like separate contracts. So yeah, so all good news. I mean, it's possible we could be starting to mobilize for stormwater sometime this coming month. It sounds like that's what might happen. As soon as we have a pre-construction meeting, we will have a schedule. And we will be able to publish that schedule and make sure everyone is aware of what's happening. And Millie has talked, we've talked about, you know, providing some like on the ground updates via Facebook in addition to the weekly updates that we'll provide in the wind and on Facebook and on the town website. We didn't publish one this week because we really didn't have any new updates and it seemed silly to keep saying the same thing. So yeah, so I don't know if folks have any questions. I think the only other things that you probably, we talked about last time as we're waiting to put the water district building back out to bid later this fall after we put the parking lots out to bid. So the goal is to get the parking lots out to bid, I think, like by October. Or be like, I would say mid, mid-October probably. So Brent will be out sometime, probably mid-September. We'll do another final review of the parking lot designs. You guys voted to approve it as, as you saw it. And we'll do a final review and approval. There were just a couple of other components that Woodard and Kern were waiting to get information on in terms of like the structural support of adding additional material to the parking lot. So that's all, well, we'll be moving forward with that this month. So I don't know, Marjorie, if I'm missing anything or we need to update on anything else, but that's the gist of it.
No, it's all good news, all positive things. Thank you.
You all set, Gabe? Okay, great. Thank you. Seven B, Public Works, also.
I really don't have a lot to, to add right now.
We've finished the paving.
Yeah, paving is done for this year. I'm gonna reach out to the state because I've been hearing that, I read a while back that in 2026, the state may be over to do an overlay, which if they do, I hope it's better than the last one. But I'm hoping that they can give me some answers on when and where they're going to be paving it or if they are, as well as line painting, because they come in and we yell as the doctor, we don't see them and they've gone on the first boat. So it's all sudden lines are done. So I'm trying to reach out to them. And then obviously the next thing that we're starting is we're gonna start to get solid sand out since that's on the year again.
I wanna think about it.
I know, but I have to.
I know. It's all part of it. Is that it then?
That's it for me perhaps.
Okay, good, thanks.
Road looks great, by the way. Parking lot, road and parking lot. Looks good.
Yeah, it's nice to come in and not. Tear your car off.
Right, the scooters.
I got, I can, I got somebody in the state I can reach out to too about the paving.
Yeah.
This person contacted me a few months ago and said they would be coming out. But that's, that's all they said.
Yeah. Yeah, it was on their website and now it's not there. I can't find it, so.
Okay, is that it? Number eight, old business review parking ordinance.
So this is a update that we did to make it more readable, more clear. We had talked about this at the last meeting and we wanted to make, I don't know. Do you want to note any other changes really, or is it really just?
It's mostly the same. I think the only thing that may need is the, if you want to include a quote boot policy.
Oh, that's right.
And then I guess I needed some guidance on Section 8, the penalties. We had gone, the old ordinance said court action. A lot of the ordinances that Millie and I reviewed had sent into a collection agency.
With other municipalities.
Yep.
Oh.
Seems a lot.
I don't have any thoughts. What you wanted to?
Do we have a collection agency we work with or?
We do for medical reimbursement.
That would be a lot easier than trying to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought.
No.
I think the collection agency would be much easier. You don't have to have somebody go to court. You don't have to deal with that. We have, um, there's quite an extensive amount of things that as a town you can do as far as boots, as far as impound and then collections.
Have we priced out a boot or?
Yeah, they're not that expensive. Like the top price was around $600 bucks.
That's not bad.
No.
So I guess we're just looking for a little bit more guidance on things that you want to have in here.
I mean, is this the draft? A few months ago, we went over this.
So I took the, the other draft we had. It was kind of like all over the place. Yeah. And I kind of tried to group it a little bit better. So a, a lot of it is exactly the same, just grouped different. The parts that were different would be in that penalty section. And then if we wanted to come up with some kind of boot policy, Rockland has one, I think, I think I saw that Camden has one. I've got a whole. These are all different policies from different towns. We could piece something together, Millie and I, and bring it back again. Just getting your thoughts on where to go with it.
Sounds good. Yeah, piece together something from them and then I would say go ahead with the collection agency.
Yeah, I agree.
The collections makes more sense.
We kind of thought it might be easier.
You're either gonna use, no, it's kind of sheriff's time to go to court or
No.
one of you guys.
Yeah.
Sheriff's don't go.
Right. So it's one of you guys and.
Well, it's a lawyer.
Yeah, collection agency.
Send a lawyer to, send a lawyer to traffic court for a $30 fine or a $50 fine. Doesn't make a lot of sense.
Okay. All right, we'll work on it and bring it back. Looks good, I think. And I do have an email into a company called Source Four. They're in Massachusetts. They're where Rockland gets their tickets printed. She's working on a draft and she's supposed to give me prices and, and such. Haven't heard back from her yet, but they have it.
Okay. So we will get more on that at the next meeting then. Is this?
That's a sample ticket.
That's a sample ticket. We had drafted one that was two-sided. I wasn't sure if they could do two-sided, so we kind of snubbed everything up, got it on one side. I have asked her if it's possible to do the two or the one. She's gonna look at both. I sent both. She's gonna look at both, see if they, if it's feasible. So that, there'll be more information for them. Okay.
Elizabeth did a really good job with this stuff.
Yeah.
That's great. That's good. Any other questions for Lizzie or Millie? Okay, thank you. Get that cleaned up hopefully the next, hopefully the next meeting. Eight D, sign updated MOU with vinyl haven water district.
Let me just review. I mean, this is a MOU that was signed back in 2022 by Andy Doerr, town manager and the water district. We're simply updating the understanding between the water district and the town for the downtown project. Just asking to approve renewing the understanding.
Did we just authorize you to sign that like Andy did back in 2022 or?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we should sign that now probably, huh?
Right. I mean, if, if you had a chance to look at it or if you have any questions, it's, it's really just an update of what was approved back in 2022. And, um, it had just a, it, you know, it expires, so. Uh, so just a, a motion to, uh,
Yeah.
Have the town manager sign the memorandum of understanding between the town and the, uh, Vinalhaven Water District.
Yeah, that is not, a little bit changed, but you can, you have the old one, I believe. Isn't there an old one that was sent before that?
Marjorie's got it.
Yeah.
I didn't copy it, put this back in.
Okay.
Uh, the term changed.
Mm-hmm.
The date. Uh, I didn't think that was, was there anything else that changed?
Not too much, no, I don't think, just the, uh, the term, the, yeah, the terms is.
Yeah, the, the term went through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. So now that we're actually, um, starting to dig and do the project, we really needed to update this memorandum.
So I make a motion that the, um, Marjorie and the Vinalhaven Wa- Water District sign the updated memorandum of understanding.
Okay.
On favor? Um, nine, new business. A, discussion on possible amendment to the harbor ordinance.
Um, Jim Noton, our harbor master, came in and asked about, um, amending the harbor ordinance. And this harbor ordinance amendment would have to go to town meeting. It's not anything that the selectmen can just approve. He asked about, uh, changing the area, uh, the paragraph about jurisdiction. Um, at this time, the, some of the sections of the harbor ordinance only, um, apply to Carver's Harbor. Uh, well, there's a specific definition about it, but it's basically Carver's and, um, Roberts Harbor. And if there's, what's happening is there, um, some moorings that are being set all around, uh, in the waters of Vinalhaven. But, uh, according to the harbor ordinance, he doesn't have the jurisdiction. Uh, he wondered if the selectmen would entertain an amendment to the harbor ordinance so that he has more jurisdiction, for instance, for moorings.
What was the reasoning behind it? Just curious.
Uh, there were some mooring set, uh, that hadn't come, uh, normally somebody will come in and fill out a, a, a mooring application just to let us know. I'm sorry, this is an emergency phone. Sorry. I'm sorry, man.
That's okay, Marjorie. Um, Millie?
Um, there have been some moorings set that were not approved by anyone. And now it sounds to me like there's a chance that we might not have jurisdiction over that area. Which one of them is Sands Cove and surrounding areas.
So is the mooring that was set an issue or is it?
Yes, it's hitting other boats.
Hitting other boats.
What's on the mooring is hitting other boats.
Well.
Well, yeah, and.
Yes. But they're supposed to be registered.
For the whole island or just Carver's Harbor and?
Right now, he's limited to.
I mean.
Vinalhaven Harbor. So he wants to amend it.
But I, oh, go ahead, Leslie.
I was just gonna say, he wants to amend it to expand his ability to monitor and deal with things that shouldn't be there or things that haven't been approved to be there. Is that my, am I correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which, would it apply to, it seems like there's a lot of gray area with it. Would it apply to just Sands Cove or more of the island?
If Jim was here, it would help for him to explain. And I think before we follow through on any of this, he needs to be present to ask, for us to ask questions.
Right.
So I, personally, I don't even want, it's no sense to talk about it because he's not here.
Yeah, table it.
Mm-hmm. Millie?
I was just gonna say, Marjorie might have more information than I do, but.
No, it's pretty much, I've talked to Jimmy and I know what the issues are, but I, if he's not gonna be here to talk about it, we're not gonna, I don't feel we should address it. I don't know if the board feels the same way, but.
I agree.
And, um, just currently, sorry, in the ordinance, it states that the harbor, Vinalhaven Harbor is defined as inside a line from Powderhouse Island to Norton's Point, the area to include Carver's Harbor and Sands Cove, Indian Creek, from Lanes Island Bridge to the outer mouth of the creek.
So that's what, that's what I always thought it. So it already has jurisdiction over Sands Cove where the issues.
That's the way it reads, yeah.
I'm just curious what he, what he wants to change. And so I don't think we should, I think we should table it and.
Yep.
We can't change it anyway because it needs to go to town meeting.
Right.
So.
Yes.
Now, you can come in. I lean towards leaving it as is, no matter what.
Well, if, if they're not gonna, I mean, the harbor com- uh, committee is two people. It should be, can have up to seven, I believe. Isn't it, Lizzie, or five at least?
Yeah, at least five.
And we only have two people that wanna serve on it, which is totally absurd.
And they haven't met in years.
All these people that have moorings and boats and, and nobody wants to be on the harbor committee. So if we change something and they don't like it, I don't really, um, not too concerned.
Fair point.
Okay, so we'll move on. Thank you. Um, we have to wait for Marjorie, I think, on the next two. Um, actually, this mass notification, nine B.
Me and Millie can do that one.
Um, yeah, I, what I read about it was like, nah. Seemed like a lot of money for what we don't even know. Yes, Millie?
Well, so here's a, a couple of things. Um, the town, the town office fields a lot of calls. Um, right now, when we have construction going on, parking bans going on, um, the roads closed, um, big meetings like the one earlier tonight. We have no way of reaching everybody. A lot of people don't read the wind and a lot of people do not have Facebook. And it would be very helpful for people to be able to report, report to us that things are, that something is needed. You know, if there's a tree down or a line's down, we're on lines, because that doesn't matter to us, but, um, trees down, um,
flooding.
Holes.
Road flooding.
Road flooding, something like that. They can report to us as well as we can report to them. And I just know for like, with the school, um, it's very helpful when they send out notices for whatever things there are. I mean, there's, this is not just a.
They capture everybody's.
They get everybody. We don't get anybody, I mean.
Oh, no, but they, but you, and when the kids go to school, you gotta fill out the paperwork and get.
Right.
So that's the only way they're capturing everybody. So anybody on, you'd have to capture all of that stuff.
That all happens in here. That, that is something that, um, can happen.
Yeah.
Um, and, I mean, it's frustrating for me in my position to not have ways to reach out to people uh, and let them, them know that things are happening. And I think it's the same, you know, I'm getting calls from Darlene and Elizabeth and Deb and Marjorie all day long as well as the things that they would like to be able to put out, that we throw on Facebook in, in the wind and then people don't even realize this happened, so, I mean.
Some of the owners are in the public too.
Right.
To, to keep themselves educated as to what's going on and.
Well, yes, but again, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I, I hear what you're saying and I, I, I get it.
And I think, you know, two thousand dollars a year is not really that much money to increase our communications with townspeople, residents, taxpayers, et cetera.
Plus, um, it's similar to the ferry notifications. Um, and given that we had an earthquake last night, it would have been really nice to know, you know, if there was damage, if, you know, it just, to me, it makes sense because like, like you said, you're fielding calls all day long. If notifications can just be put out, then people who have signed up for it will be aware, will be informed. Because people don't always look on Facebook. People don't always look on, in the wind.
I'm sorry. Oh, Facebook, I disagree with that comment. But, uh, anyway.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
I also think it would be a good thing because, um, especially with snow removal. Um, if everyone, you know, if this is done through text messages, people would have service if people don't have power because of the snow. Um, and also the downtown project probably have quite a lot of notifications waiting for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so this will be used quite effectively for the next five to ten years, I would say.
Millie?
And it can also do email. So on the text, so just so people don't have tax, there aren't many don't anymore of them. So.
We're talking about, um, the mass notification system.
You know, and it's not written in gold that there's a ten-year project, a ten-year, um, contract either. So year-to-year pay, the first year is extra for setup and to get people educated on it. Um, and then from there, the price drops. And, you know, if it doesn't work and we don't use it and we're not seeing any changes, then I would say dump it. But, I mean, I think, I think it could be extremely useful.
Marjorie?
Oh, I just, I just wanted to say, and I, uh, I don't mean to seem negative, but we did have uh, uh, an account like this or a program like this, Civic Plus, when I first came and nobody ever used it and nobody ever got the training, so, um, I, so, I don't know. I just wanted to.
The only thing I see here reading it, it sounds like it's a, it says this is a three-year term and then after that you can go year to year. Is what I read here, so.
They also say they need sixty days note, written notice to cancel. That's also in there.
Alrighty, any more questions or comments on this? Elizabeth?
There's the second one, the text them all.
Yep.
Is, um, what the school uses.
Mm-hmm.
A little less sophisticated. Um, I'm not sure. I haven't done the demo with them, talked to them. This is just from their website. Um, haven't done the demo with them. I don't know if they have the two-way text. Um, this text my gov has, like you could put in keywords and it's gonna send them to the website. It's gonna direct them to an answer. It's all the AI or whatever. Um, this I don't think does, a little less sophisticated, but basically the school has call them all so they ha- ha- can record a thirty-second voice message and send it out. This is the same thing with text.
Yeah.
You only pay as you go, just another option.
Is there any way to quantify how many calls we're receiving that this might eliminate?
I'd have to think about it.
I don't understand.
Quantify like.
I mean, the comments were that this office is getting a lot of calls from citizens and. And Millie's getting calls from citizens. I mean, is there a way to quantify how many phone calls a day we're rece- we're fielding for stuff that this would take care of?
I don't know.
It would be difficult because it's coming into my cell phone, Nick's cell phone, Dusty's role, I mean, uh, role doesn't have that, but.
Right.
Um, and then, you know, people stopping around the streets and everywhere else.
Oh, I, I don't know that people stop on the street. That, that, this is, this is gonna fix that. I don't, I don't see that.
I think you should look into this too, Leslie, before we go.
Sorry, fam. There is all, there is a, um, dashboard there too. So, um, these text messages can go to individual departments. So if it's something to do with code enforcement, it could be sent to that. Um, it could be sent to me for roads and transfer station or what have you. Um, and then there's on the dashboard, it tells you, there's a list of everything. And as you go, you can make comments on it, check it off, whatever, so that everybody knows what's going on. Or, you know, things are being dealt with. So I thought that was helpful too.
I mean, I don't. I wouldn't spend the money on that other thing. If you did any of it, the text them all thing, from the off chance, you do need to text a bunch of people to do that, because that's, that's a pay-as-you-go thing. But, I don't think enough people are gonna use it to make this work a while.
The other piece of it is that we don't have this in our budget for this year, especially the text my gov one. That it would be something that we'd have to plan for, if you wanted to do it, plan for, for next year.
I don't approve all at all, so if anybody wants to make a motion, go for it.
Sounds like it's just gonna get voted down anyways.
Would it be helpful, since it's not in the budget anyway, for the remainder of this year? We keep a list of things that we would have sent out a notice for and then we can see how many times we would have used it. Would that help?
You wanna take the time to write down all your calls, that's Italian. But, no, I, I just think it's a waste of money personally.
I was specifically thinking what we would put out.
Right.
I think that's a good idea. If you wanna take the time.
I think in a month after recording all that data, then bring it up again. I, I'll report.
Okey-dokey. Okay, no motion then? Okay, we'll move on. Um, oh, um, Marjorie, we're gonna, just to quickly go back to nine A. We decided that, um, because Jim's not here to talk about.
Okay.
We are gonna table it.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, nine C, library purchase of computer equipment.
Um, so one of the things that, um, the library has been looking at since, um, all of their computers are old and, you know, just not operating well. Uh, that they wanna replace their computers, uh, it's, there's five computers. Um, I don't really speak the language, something about a desktop core. Is that like a server? That's a processor, okay. So, um, uh, Randy Pitts is working with Jen on what they need to replace some of the, some of the equipment. Um, the cost of all of this is, uh, under ten thousand. Um, the Friends of the Library is willing to participate financially with some of it. Uh, I didn't get a clear answer on, you know, how much they wanted to participate with the cost. Uh, I've attended the last Friends of the Library meeting and also attended the, um, Trust, Library Trustees meeting. And it, uh, is something that keeps coming up, that the, the computers, that this is the computers that people come in and use, uh, the public computers and also the computers that, uh, Jen has and Linda has are just old and not operating correctly. Um, so I guess what I'm looking for is, uh, an approval, and this money is already in the library reserve. Yeah, there's money set aside for this purpose, uh, to, uh, spend up to ten thousand dollars for new computers and equipment for the library.
And, uh, any potential grants for that type of stuff?
There might be. I, I mean, I haven't asked Jen. Jen did get an eight thousand dollar grant to up, uh, upgrade the lighting
Mm-hmm.
at the library, so that's another project that's in the works. Um.
Maybe worth looking. I, I know that's kind of what the new administration thinks, it's kind of tight that way.
I think Jen's pretty good about.
I'm sure.
Looking for things like that.
Yeah.
But it's in the reserve, correct?
This money is already in the library reserve fund. It's nothing, not new money, not taxes, anything like that. It's money that's set aside for the library. Primarily, the money that's accumulated in the reserve fund is about, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars right now. But there's all, I mean, the library has that Harriet Chatfield Fund for, um, capital improvements. Um, and that's, that's grown quite a bit, uh, maybe a hundred and eighty thousand. And that's, that's grown quite a bit, uh, maybe $180,000 now. So if there's any infrastructure issues, I mean, that could be used. That's a by vote of the library trustees, uh, to bring that to the board, uh, to ask to use that money.
That's done well. It was 117 when, when we started, and I was on the board at that time.
Yeah, I guess that wouldn't quote me on that, but I'm doing that from memory, but it has grown.
So we should, uh, make a motion that we approve the, uh, library purchase of purchase of computer equipment to come out of the reserve fund.
Okay.
On favor? And just to make note, um, the Friends are really generous to the library.
Oh, yeah, definitely. Both volunteering and financially.
Yeah, they do a great job. Alrighty, on to the report of town manager.
Um, I don't, did you wanna talk a, a little bit about the, the new, that we're getting the new slides for the park, just to, a brief update on that?
Yeah.
That they're ordered, and do you have a date when they're coming for the?
She said not until maybe November.
Oh, okay.
But he's the, um, guy that, the person that owns the company. He and his wife are coming out Friday, I believe, and we're gonna meet up there. And he's gonna scope it out and see the best place for the new slides to go. And maybe draw up, um, some kind of a plan for us to move forward with some other equipment and tell us if we need to demolish the, get rid of the monkey bars, which probably we will, and put in a different type. I'm sorry?
Probably the swing set, too.
Oh, I don't know. Yeah, it's hard to say because that looks in good shape. We're gonna have him look at it anyway, so.
And they got the new little boat up there. I don't know if anybody, anybody's been up there to look, but there's, there's some improvements, yeah.
That was a very generous gift from, um, I need to send them a thank you note, too.
See if it works. Is it working?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. I called one day and asked George if he would talk to the owner about, if they would give us some kind of a deal on if we ordered one, or maybe two. And he came back and he said, "Mom, they're not making those little boats anymore, but we have one left that we use in parades and, like, boat shows and whatnot." And he's, the owner said, "We'll just give that to the town, to the playground." So that worked out really well.
Yeah.
And it's really cute.
It's exciting. He's moving forward.
And we can always, um, you know, you can replace parts to it and, you know, if they get kicked out, like some slats, which hopefully they wouldn't, you never know. And anybody that has any kind of woodworking skills, which you don't really, it's not complicated.
No.
Um, we can keep, keep it, um.
Not trying to keep it watertight, just keep it.
No, no, no. Hope it won't sink.
If it does up there, we got a lot of issues.
But it's nice. It's really cute. It's got a little slide and it's nice. Yeah.
Um, the only other thing I'd like to just throw out and see if there's any interest in, in developing a, um, what is it called? I looked for a, a couple of other towns. It's a ordinance to regulate domesticated chickens. I found one in Rockland and one in Belfast. I do periodically get complaints. I don't know if you, you know, hear about, you know, neighbors that are upset by, um, you know, someone having chickens or roosters around, but, um, is it something that you want me to try to develop? And again, it would be a town meeting vote.
Yes, I think you should.
Well, certainly, a lot of people do keep chickens, fowl, whatever you want.
It's not to eliminate it.
Right.
And there's actually, there was actually in, in the last legislative session, there was a, a new law, uh, that passed about you can't, you can't completely, uh, eliminate that right to have chickens. But it was fairly, um, you know, it didn't really say too much other than that.
Who would enforce it, just out of curiosity?
It'd be.
Animal control. I guess.
Code, code officer or animal control.
But I mean, if you live next door to somebody and they're, you know, your chickens and roosters running around.
Free range.
Free range, yeah. I mean, I don't blame some people for not wanting, wanting to have that.
They clean up the ticks on my lawn and that.
Yeah, I mean, the Guinea. The Guinea hens, you know, they get in the road and can be. And the roosters don't just crow early in the morning, they grow all day.
They're always on the corner at 5:00 o'clock, this afternoon.
Which doesn't.
So that rooster's got issues.
Put blinders on them.
It is what it is.
Get a little. Anyway.
Well, we're not living in New York. We're living on Long Island.
Anyway, I didn't wanna work on it if you all weren't interested in, um.
Consensus?
I got, I have no interest in that, but I don't have any interest in it.
Okay. Millie?
I'd just like to make a comment on it. If, if I'm hearing roosters at 4:30 in the morning, every morning at my house, and they're waking me up at 4:30 in the morning, but I let my dog out and my dog barks, my dog's an issue, but the rooster's not. So I would hope that maybe you guys reconsider.
Well, I think.
It's not just, I mean, it's not me. I haven't been one to complain, but it's a problem in my house and tired of it.
I think, too, it's, it's like to, um, instead of having, letting them free range, like, to keep them in a, in a hen, hen pen.
Chicken pen.
A chicken coop or whatever, you know? And I think that's a reasonable thing for a neighbor to expect. So I, personally, I think, Marjorie, it would be good if Marjorie did it, but if you folks don't agree.
I agree with you.
Okay. Well, I think we're all.
Three said no.
Yeah. So, alrighty.
Any questions for me about anything?
I think you've answered all of the questions that we have on the agenda tonight, Marjorie. Thank you, too. Report of members, 11. Peyton?
Uh, I was gonna ask, there was a thing on the treasurer's warrant that me and Les saw, that was, it was something to Knox County for $750,000?
Oh, that's our county tax.
Okay. Can I, can I give a little bit of an explanation of what, exactly what that is?
Well, every year, we get an assessment from the county, and then that's added to what we have to raise from taxation. So what, um, maybe I'm not, uh, being, uh, it's to cover the cost of the county that the county has, uh, for, um, their, let's see, they do the registry of deeds. Dan's gonna talk.
Yeah, they just, they just uploaded, um, I think, pretty recently. Knox County's pretty regular with uploading their annual budgets, but.
Yeah, I have a copy of it.
It's based on your individual town's valuation as a portion of the total valuation of the county, just like you would have one property for a whole town. Um, but they have a pretty detailed explanation of what their budget is. It's largely, I think it's like 80% corrections and law enforcement.
Yeah.
Between the jail and the, um, the sheriff's department.
Jail courts.
The vast majority of it.
You pay tax to the town, town pays tax to the county, so on and so forth.
The world goes round and round.
It all runs uphill. I think we did taxed again.
I'm sorry if I wasn't, uh, explicit on that, but I certainly, I have a copy of the county budget.
It was, it was just a massive check. That's, that's the only reason why I said something. Nothing against it, but.
It is, it is a massive check. Yeah.
And we have a high valuation also.
It's based on property valuation.
I don't have anything. I don't, you don't, okay.
All right, um, number 12. I move that we go into executive session pursuant to 1 MRS, section 405, parentheses 6, parentheses A, to discuss contractual obligations related to the Knox County Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
On favor? Thank you, folks, for coming. Hi, Gabe.